...manager Ron Nally, so let's hear it for him. And I noticed in public forum, we have three speakers from Montreat, so maybe we'll hear the real story.
I always thought this was a chopping block.
Okay, I would like to have you all rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you so much for opportunity to come and do the town's business. We pray for wisdom and strength as we make decisions that affect citizens of this town and the folks who visit. We thank you so much for this beautiful place you've given us to live, and ask that you would make us good stewards of this, your town. In Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item number four is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any concerns or additions, deletions, or modifications? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to?
I'll make the motion. We accept the agenda as it is.
Motion made by Bob to accept the agenda, second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Going to staff reports, and been here seven days, I'll be interested to hear what he has to say.
Not much of anything, actually. No, I just want to say to the board, I thank you and appreciate the opportunity to be here. It's a wonderful place, and I look forward to working with y'all. We mailed out, or emailed out, the staff reports. As you mentioned, it's been a week. As I get more comfortable, I'll be able to summarize those like Chris did. However, if you feel like it's appropriate that we look at another way of sending all this information, because it is a lot of information to you than to, or have suggestions of how we might do this differently, just please let me know. So, I look forward to talking to y'all about that. Second thing, I just want to say congratulations on receiving approval from the state on the intent to fund the Green Line project. That's a huge accomplishment, and I know there's a lot of thanks to go around, so that's an exciting, exciting news. Also, at your table, you have my business card, a new business card with my cellphone number on it, so please feel free to contact me anytime.
He didn't give me one.
Oh, I think I did.
What is it, there's a reason for that?
And again, I just want to thank everyone, the board, staff, for my welcome to the community, your kindness and your patience as I get grounded here. So, thank you, and welcome to my friends from Montreat. They may not say, but this is former Mayor Letta Jean Taylor. She was mayor of Montreat for quite a number of years, former Commissioner Eric Nichols, and former Commissioner Martha Campbell. So, thank y'all for coming down the mountain.
Very good, welcome. Okay, all right, we're going to the council liaison reports and comments. Steve, when?
Well, the only, first of all, the Board of Adjustment and Lake Structure Appeals Board, both were canceled. There were no hearings, which is very rare, boards altogether. And the Parks and Recreation Board met this past Thursday. We'll have one item on our agenda later, which is old business regarding the parking lot agreement in Buffalo Creek Park and Trailhead. We, the golf course had a record number of rounds in July for foot golf. They had 212 rounds for just a month, and it made July the record month ever for the number of rounds of foot golf and golf combined being played. So, the golf course is doing really well in spite of all this rain we're getting now, and foot golf is catching on pretty big. The Buffalo Creek Park, there's been two miles of the trail completed. We still have another five miles to go, and our deadline is December 31st, if I recall, Larry. And it should be much easier to do than what the first two miles took. The Flowering Bridge, you've seen some trees out there that's been planted in the ground with boards holding them erect and all that. There is an arbor being built, and then a atrium with a dome, and all of those structures were approved. They're actually on the North Carolina State Highway, or right-of-way for the state highway, and they were approved, and there'll be a kiosk later on. So, things are moving along at the Flowering Bridge and looking really good. The Parks and Recreation Board did agree to fund $2,500 for the Flowering Bridge to purchase more pavers, and also $1,000 for grinding of stumps in the new Dipmer Watts Nature Park. I wanted to, if you notice, we have some really nice flags on display, new, and the way they're spread out, and at the back door also, and I wanted to thank Tony Hennessy, our Public Works Director, for making that happen. They look really beautiful, I believe. And also want to welcome Ron to the town. We had a citizen complaint or question come into our town website over the weekend about the signs in Morse Park and where it talks about firearms. Most of you may know, two months ago, we revamped our firearm regulation, and so the signs that are there are not in compliance with that regulation. They are in the process of being updated, and we notified that individual of that. So, he was happy with that response, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good, Stephen. John?
The zoning and planning board met on Tuesday, July 19th, at 9:30. There was, Mr. Baldwin presented a present, a draft, presented drafted language for an amendment that would ensure that gardens for non-commercial use are allowed in all zoning districts without the need for a permit. The board voted to recommend that the following definitions would be added to the zoning regulations. The definitions are, as a, for garden is a plot of ground where herbs, fruits, flowers, ornamentals, or vegetables are cultivated, and the definition of gardening should be the cultivation of plants in any zoning district on lots solely for the use and/or consumption of the lot owner. This activity is allowed in every zoning district, and no permit is required if the cultivated area is 2,000 square feet or less and located 50 feet or more from a body of water. The board continued a review of provisions and zoning regulations related to fences and fencing. There was extensive discussion regarding ways to relax the standards for fences in the street front yard setback while still ensuring that they are aesthetically in keeping with the town's vision. After much discussion, a motion was made and unanimously passed that no changes should be made to the zoning regulations regarding that topic. There was a brief discussion of soil erosion and sedimentation regulations, of the amendment process. Each board member was given a copy of the current erosion control regulations and a copy of the proposed amendments to those regulations, and provided an overview by Clint Calhoun. There was brief discussion on the earlier conversation regarding gardens and how to integrate those changes into the erosion control regulations. It was decided that Clint should bring recommendations to the next regular meeting on how to incorporate those changes. There's a continuing discussion of the erosion control regulations, but it will be continued at the next meeting. No action was taken. The next meeting is a week from today at 9:30 a.m.
Very good, John. Thank you. Mary Ann?
First of all, the ABC Board met, and they are still discussing some problems that they're having, having lost the town support in the bookkeeping and recordkeeping area, still looking at hiring someone or working something out there, and possibly doing some hiring because the manager is part-time, and he's pretty much working full-time and more hours than he wants to doing the bookkeeping and converting over to the new computerized system. So, they're having some issues there. There is continued discussion of when they will be moved, if they will be moved, and whether there is sufficient reason that the site they might be moving to would not serve their purpose. So, that is an ongoing concern of the board, and we will be meeting next Tuesday to look at some of the specific reasons they feel that that's problematic. The Lake Advisory Board met last week, and the topic for discussion was primarily regarding the different operations on the lake that are commercial, and which ones, or what sort of agreement they should have with the town, discussing the town's need for funds for dredging, and wanting to spread the cost of dredging around particularly among those that are using the lake for profit. There were no recommendations made. They're still working on that. Subcommittee met this morning to identify what different types of commercial activity is taking place on the lake, and I think it will be a while before we hear their recommendations. There are a lot of ideas, sometimes controversy, and a lot of discussion. I did not attend the school board meeting because the, at the last meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion with issues pertaining to the school, and they were here to discuss those with us. I offered again to serve as a liaison or to report any news that they wanted to have reported back to town council. I did talk to Tim Turner, who is the chairman of the school board, and I talked with him a few days ago and told him if there was anything that should be reported to let me know, and I didn't hear from him. So, that's all I have to report tonight.
Okay.
Okay, we had the utilities advisory board meet on August 2nd. One of their agenda topics was CWS. The contractor there made a presentation asking for consideration on reduction on the sewer rates. That discussion was left with no change in rates to be considered at the next meeting, and also was brought up the flow meter for the sewer had not been done and needed to be done, so that's going to be happening. Next item was our loan application update and review. As you heard from Ron, that we got this letter from North Carolina saying that our project has been accepted. They'll be at 0% interest, and there'll be a $500,000 loan forgiveness at the end of the project. We have some milestones now. Engineering submittal by December 1 of this year. Engineer report approval by May 1, 2017. Bid and design package submittal by November 1, 2017. Bid and design package approval by March 1, 2018. Receive bids, submit bid information by July 2, 2018, and execute the contract by August 1, 2018. This is the milestone package that was put out from the state to us in a letter, and then with the general assembly notifications, we're to get back to them with a letter 45 days prior to the presentation to their local government. The project's going well. The aerial mapping is about 17 miles. We now have two miles of that completed, and the engineers have met with DOT, and we will be allowed to use the road base leaving the dam area going out until we get into full land, so we won't have to try to cut through the rocks or the boulders on the side of the road. That permission's been given. So, that project's well underway, and everybody's working together. Only other thing they had on the agenda was, we have about eight or 10 topics for consideration for the board to hear. Next meeting, they're going to try to prioritize those, so I encourage anyone here that has a utility issue or concern to please join the meeting, and if you have a topic you'd like to address, let's get it on the agenda, and they'll prioritize it. That's all I got.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Any other comments or by any of the members on any other issue that might be current topic? Okay, hearing none. We can move on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry. You'll indulge me just a second. I was reading something when you said that. I forgot to report, three or four months ago, the Carolina Mountain Land Conservancy approached the town about acquiring the 1,324 acres of the Weed Patch Mountain Track to add to the current Buffalo Creek Park. The purchase would be funded via a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant, so it would be at no cost to the town. And the current status of that grant, the grant request has been submitted, and that's what we did in our meeting, is we authorized them to submit that grant request. That grant request has been submitted, and the announcement of the grants, grant awards will not be made until October. So, we won't hear anything again until October on that issue. I forgot to report that, and I apologize.
Nope, no problem. Very good, thank you. Okay, moving on to the next area, item number seven, public forum. And although Rachel signed up second, I'm going to ask her to come forward, which might give her a chance to depart earlier. Rachel, will you come forward and introduce yourself and where you live and what you're here for?
I am Rachel Thomas, and I'm running for the Register of Needs.
Want to come over to the microphone, so it's, yeah?
Thank you for letting me know about your meetings tonight. I just wanted to get out and meet some folks. I don't know if you know much about the Register of Needs office. I like to call it a huge filing cabinet for the county. We record all your land records. We house all the original birth certificates, death certificates. We issue all the marriage licenses. I see some veterans here. We, of course, report your military discharges. We survey your property. We record that survey in our office, highway plans. So, just about anything you need recorded, or if it's a valuable record, it's kept in our office. I have worked in the office for 12 years, so I know some things that need to be done, some upgrades that need to be done, some changes, just to get things organized. I tend to be a very organized person, so I like things in a place. And there's a lot in the office, and if any of you haven't been there, go up and take a look. Give you a better idea of some of the things I want to do to make some changes in the office. I don't know if anybody has any questions tonight about what we do or anything else. I've got several plans for the office. The biggest project will be getting it cleaned up. There's an overflow of excess equipment that doesn't get used, and just things out of place that my first project is going to be to get the office cleaned up. Of course, then that brings in, I can get some new technology in the office. We've got great software for forwarding of our documents, but there's some other software we could bring in. If I can get out there to some seminars and conferences and be aware of some of those, that technology, I'd like to bring some of that to the office, get some of those old records maybe on the computer, and out of the big indexes that we have that everybody has to get. So, I've got a lot of plans for the office. So, I'm out tonight asking for your support. Votes coming up in November. You're going to see my name on the ballot. I think it's important that you meet the person that you know you're voting for. So, does anybody have any questions about our office, or, yes, sir? We are in the courthouse, and it's actually in the new edition. If you go through the main floor, through the Department of Courts office, we're on that new edition that was done, I believe, in '90 or '91. And there is a sign there, Register of Needs, that points back. Yes, Main Street, brother. So, if you haven't recorded your discharge, we do that free of charge. So, just bring your ID, military or driver's license, so that we can record that for you. Of course, I'm not there right now. I did lose my job over this. So, you won't see me, but hopefully November, you'll see me. Any others?
Very good. Thank you very much, Rachel.
Thank y'all very much.
Thanks for coming out, introducing yourself. John, you're next on the list. Do you mind if I had the three people from Montreat go first?
Not one bit.
Because we, okay, then, we'd like to have Letta Jean Taylor come forward. We want the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Not the whole truth.
Mayor, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I can't tell you the whole history of him, because when he was a little boy, I can't. Boy, he lived next door to me, so I can tell you lots. But I won't do that. I just wanted to say to you, congratulations for choosing Ron as your town manager. I was mayor when he was hired in Montreat, and Montreat is a much better place for his service there. The staff is much better equipped to do their jobs, and the vision he had for Montreat and the process of getting that done has made Montreat a better place, and I look forward to seeing what he's going to do here in Lake Lour. And we'll miss him there, but we can come see him here anytime.
Very good, thank you.
One question, how much did he pay you to say that?
Not much.
Okay, Eric Nichols?
I'm prepared to tell the truth. I'm Eric Nichols, happily living in Montreat. Woe to you. Do you know what you have done? Wow. So, I've only known Ron for eight years, plus the two that I've been off the council, but I had to prepare extensively some notes, so here they are. He's thoughtful. He's patient. He's really a good listener. He's proactive. He's loyal. He's a real team player. He's great with financial matters, understands grants and grant writing. So, if those are good things, then maybe it's going to work out.
Very good. Thank you. Those are good things. Okay, Martha Campbell? All good things come in threes, right?
I'm Martha Campbell, also from Montreat, and he did not know we were coming. We had said, oh, maybe we'll show up, and he looked a little panicked, went earlier, but he saw us tonight. So, I want to congratulate you on having such an outstanding person now working for your community, and tell you that there are things that we have, benefits that we have in Montreat that we would not have if it weren't for Ron. One of them has to do with one of those part-of-grants that you all talked, that you all talked about tonight. But our town is more accessible. We now have a paved walking path that's accessible for people, and we now have more deep wells to provide our water system, and we have other services that we got because Ron went after them and found grants and found ways to pay for them, and helped the staff do some of the work, and it's made our community a better place. So, congratulations to you. We miss him, but we know it's a great move for you all to have him, and we'll just come down here and see him. So, thank you.
Thank y'all.
I was going to add one more thing. We were going to do the wave, but...
Well, I sure feel better hearing all that. I had my reservations, but I feel better.
Okay, John Kilby. Kathy, you coming up with him, or?
Ron, I almost came up to do my rendition, though here he comes to save the day, but I'll save that. I won't, I won't do that. If you're not as good as I say, are you in trouble, buddy? That's all I can do. I'll be real quick if I can, Bob. If you want me, if you want to stop me, stop me. I don't know how many of you've heard the rumor. I really want to put this out, so it's not just a rumor, but about six or eight weeks ago, I kind of threw a little birdie, found out that the North Carolina Department of Transportation is considering replacing the bridge over the lake, which is over the dam. You may not realize this, but the town owns the dam, but the state owns the bridge. And the state is, the bridge is attached to the dam, but the state owns the bridge, the town owns the dam. So, I thought, well, that's interesting. And a little bit more I heard about that as it went along. I made myself some notes. I didn't put them on my, on my hand, but I began to hear some, some things about what was going, and with some discussions with Shannon Baldwin. He said, oh, I think this is a good ways out, and so I wasn't too worried about it. And then last Tuesday, I received a letter from North Carolina Transportation. It says, Dear John Kilby, and I won't read it all to you, but basically it says that they're constantly working to provide better and safer transportation facilities. Every two years, they develop an improvement program called TIP, a seven-year plan to identify needs of the state. And so they determined that surveys should be made for that bridge replacement project. This will notify me that I'm included in that current TIP, and engineers, surveyors, geologists, and others representing DOT will be working on or near my property, for the next several months, collecting data to be used in the selection of the location and design of the bridge replacement. The specific area in which representatives will be working does not necessarily indicate the final location or extent proposed improvement. Now, here's a good one. If you have any concerns or recommendations about this project, or if you feel a public hearing is warranted, please contact Drew Joyner. I'll contact him days out to Monday. So, then I called this gentleman that wrote this letter and had about a 30-minute conversation with him this morning. So, just to quell some of the rumors, because yesterday morning, I heard the rumor that the new bridge is coming off of Charlotte Drive to go across the lake, and I think we can put that one to rest, that that's, that's not the deal. It seems like that they're, they're considering three things. They're considering a bridge on this side of the dam, across the lake, in front of the dam. They're considering the possibility of a dam, of a bridge below the dam to cross what may be where the existing sewer plan is, which will be gone once the Green Line's in, and then to go up the North Shore, to come back up to the side to connect back to Buffalo Shoals. The third option is, you would turn onto Buffalo Shoals Road at the point of view, and immediately upon going down about 100 yards, you'd go onto a bridge, and your next thing you would go through is my bedroom. And that's not a joke. That is the third option that they're considering. Putting a bridge across our lake, starting at the boat slips, just down where Alan's got the boat slips on the road, and coming straight across the lake, through Minnie Kathy's bedroom, and straight up Naval Drive. That concerns me. So, most of you know me well enough to know that I thought it was time that I started checking on some things. So, and I want to be sure I say this. Everybody that knows me knows I'm a property rights kind of guy, but this is not just about me, okay? I want to be sure everybody knows that. The concerns, it would affect everybody on Naval Drive, obviously. Properties, houses, I don't know how many houses would be torn down, taken away by this, but a number. Our quiet little street that we drive 10 miles an hour would certainly change for those that live on the upper part of it. The thing about the surveying of the property disturbed me. I asked this young man, Richard Hensley, on the phone, who I don't think he thought I was real bad after we got through, but maybe he had his questions sometime along the way. It says, your cooperation in allowing representatives to perform their state work is appreciated. I said, what if I don't allow you to do the work? I said, what if I don't allow you to do the work? And he said, well, there's really not anything we can do. If you tell us we can't come on your property, can't come on my property. I haven't expressed that possibility yet of doing that. But... Let me get back to my notes here. So that survey's going to be happening. As a matter of fact, I was told today by this gentleman that he understands that they'll have boats on the lake in the next few weeks, doing soundings of the, of the water and the bottom of the lake, down toward the dam, to begin to do their, their things. Now, I do know, before I go any further, that Shannon Baldwin and Ron, our new town manager, and maybe John, and some people from the asset committee are going to be meeting with DOT next Monday. So hopefully, some, some information stuff will come out of, out of that meeting then. I certainly feel like it's necessary for public hearings. This is, you know, somebody told me today, they thought a good idea would be to start at Larkins, put the bridge right down the middle of the lake, go to the middle, two spurs this way, go on down to the resort. Everybody could have their own private driveway, not have to drive around these crooked roads. There's all kinds of options and possibilities, I think. Here's one thing that will get you. This, this was dropped, this comment was made during the meeting that these gentlemen had with Shannon and with Dean Gibbons. The bridge across the lake through our bedroom is estimated, just out of the blue, what was it, Shannon, the wag, if you can figure out what Dugay jig means, one hundred million dollars. Well, I'm thinking for crying out loud, we can almost build a new dam for a hundred million dollars. If they want to spend that kind of money, just let us have a new dam, we'll put the bridge back on top of it. Well, none of us in this room ever have to worry about it again. So anyways, that's...
John, how bad is that road over the bridge?
Well, it's the bridge. You know, I don't know if they've actually done a survey or a study to know how much longer they think the bridge is going to last. And they don't know how much longer the dam's going to last, you know, because we've not done a survey, I mean, a study for that either. So there's a lot of things need to happen. So, you know, I want you to think about every piece of property rights, that's one thing. I don't want to see a bridge over our lake. That's number two. I mean, I, first thing I said was, for crying out loud, go below the dam, put in a bridge across the river, and drive up to the other side, and everybody lives happily ever after. Here's the main thing I'm asking, okay, is, and this word was stolen from me by the guy with the notes in his hands, because he said Ron's proactive, and that's exactly what we need to be, is proactive and not reactive. And, you know, this is a big deal. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, John. I would like to know if anybody had heard about this project sitting up here before about last Wednesday. That's when I heard about it.
I heard about it by word of mouth, and I might have been the little bird that mentioned it to John initially. I can't remember. It is a month or so back, it is a month or two back that I heard about it in a general conversation with Dean, and, and I asked Dean if Shannon knew about it, and if the asset management board knew about it. And I guess it's come up for discussion with the board.
I heard about it the first time at the asset management meeting, which was last, whenever we had our last zoning meeting, July nineteenth is when I learned about it.
Okay.
I heard that from Steve.
Okay. Let me just say is that there's a very complex system, transportation planning system, that several of us attend, and I've never heard of it before. So when they say in this letter that this has been in the seven-year plan or whatever...
No, it's going in the seven-year.
Okay, because right now, well, right now, the seven-year plan includes two of our projects. One is our downtown center plan, and the other is the walkway between the two areas. Now, we, Shannon is on the TCC, I'm on the TAC, and we haven't heard of it before. So, John, I think what you have to do is that we have to gather through our proactive new town manager, and we really have to put our arms around this thing. This thing is a surprise. I go to these meetings, I've been to every meeting with the exception of a few, for the last two years, and I've never heard of it before.
Here's the big concern, okay? I'm sixty-six years old, okay, trying to think about downside. With this on the table, and we try to sell our house, it ain't happening, because it has to be disclosed who's going to buy a house, that there's a possibility it's going to be taken down in a plan that happens fifteen years from now.
I agree.
That's the big, that's the big, and it's not just me.
Right. Let us grab hold of it.
I want it out there.
Yeah.
You didn't know about it till last week. I want everybody to know.
Right. Well, none of the names on this are the names that we, that come to the meetings, none of the names, I, I, you know, this is, this is really foreign to me.
It's concerning to me.
And, and, yeah, okay, let's, for now, put it to bed, but we, we, I think we, this is one of our, will jump to be one of our priority projects.
Shannon and Ron, Charlie Ellis and myself are going to meet with this guy in Asheville, his office, Tuesday, excuse me, Monday morning. So, I'm thinking Monday, maybe it's early Monday afternoon. We're meeting with him Monday, and we'll have a report at the next council meeting. We'll have a report to you right after that meeting, let you know what's going on. And we'll maybe put, we might even need to, depending on what we hear there, we may need to put something in a newsletter to go around to everybody in town, just to get, bring everybody up to speed on it.
That's, thank you, John. Hi, Kathy. Thank you. Okay. Nobody else signed up, but would anybody else like to make a comment at this time? Seeing no hands, let's move on in the agenda. If I can find the agenda. Okay. Number eight, the consent agenda. Basically, the minutes, and they were modified with some insert that she put forward. Anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes?
Already, already gave Andy a couple of typo corrections, nothing that we need to dwell on, nothing that changes context.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion made by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second by, who was on my right?
Either one.
Stephen. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. This is about, this is item number nine, the proposed parking lot agreement at Buffalo Creek Park Public Trailhead between the Fairfield Mountains Property Owners Association, Inc., and the State of North Carolina and the town of Lake Lour. And I guess Larry, are you here to talk about?
Well, I can introduce this, Mayor. Last month, we brought this agreement up. We sent it to our attorney for any, any comments and feedback. Larry is here to answer any questions you may have. The agreement has been through the attorney. Larry has done all the legwork, gotten that back to the state and back to the Rumbling Ball folks, the Property Owners Association, and all the, things have been ironed out, and what we have in our packet is a final agreement that the other two parties have tentatively agreed to. And whether he's here tonight, seeking our approval of it. So if y'all have any questions, he's ready to come up and answer them.
Were there any, any concerns or about any of the signage or the restrictions or the... Okay?
If not, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Steve.
I move that we approve the parking lot agreement for the Buffalo Creek Park Public Trail as presented currently in our packet.
I'll second.
Motion made by Stephen, second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Moving on to...
I would like to thank Larry for having done all that legwork. He did, it was a tremendous effort on his part in contacting these agencies back and forth and getting things ironed out, and a super job, Larry. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks to the Commissioners on behalf of the park.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Larry. Okay. Item number ten, new business, proposed amendment to the town of Lake Lour Personnel Manual, Article Number Nine, Section Five, detrimental personal conduct defined. Stephen, you want to, I guess you were the one to sort of introduce this.
Yes, just a brief memo that's pretty much self-explanatory, I thought. Of course, I wrote it. So a couple of months ago, as stated earlier, we revamped our gun ordinance and made some changes and adopted the new ordinance under Chapter eighty-four point oh four. And the intent at the time, at least my intent, was that employees be allowed to carry lawfully permitted concealed handguns, just like any other citizen would be allowed to do or is allowed to do now under the current ordinance. But we found in our personnel manual, there was a sub-paragraph that conflicted with that intent, and, and this recommended change would resolve that conflict and then make it consistent with the intent. The, the new paragraph would read, possession of unauthorized firearms or other lethal weapons on the job, which is detriment, considered detrimental personal conduct. Then it would go on to say, lawfully permitted concealed handguns are considered authorized firearms and may be carried while on the job. And that was the recommended change, so.
Any questions, comments?
My only comment, I think it clarifies, I sort of felt, as Stephen did, that his First Amendment that was approved last month was sufficient in that it allowed permitted firearms, and the, the part about employees and staff was saying unauthorized. But this clarifies it, so that should make everyone happy.
Thank you.
Very good. Do I have a motion to Steve?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Bob to include this.
I'll second.
Second by, okay, motion made by Bob, second by John to include this paragraph, the, the changes that Stephen recommended. Any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay. Moving on to item number ten B, request from Frank Chivadi. Did I say that right? I didn't say Chiafi. I'm not saying it. I'm getting close. Okay. I know where you live. Okay. On behalf of the American Legion to disconnect the town utilities at one twelve Boys Camp Road. You want to come forward, Frank, and tell us what, okay?
Commander Dennis Yellen will take over.
Okay.
I don't know where to start.
Just identify yourself and your residence, and then...
I live in Walton.
Okay.
I'm commander of the legion up here. There's about, at the most, there's eight of us together on any given Friday night. And the other times, there's maybe five of us, you know, just according who can come and who can't come. And here lately, we've not been to legion up here in two months, three months. Two or three months, we didn't turn the water on, fire on, or anything. And I look at this bill, we've got a bill here for a hundred and ninety-three dollars instead of one cent, and there ain't even been a drink of water out of the building. I mean, you know, we can't hardly afford that. So what we'll do, we'll put this place up for sale if someone would like to buy. I mean, we don't want to come and ask for this and ask for that. I mean, we need help, you know? I mean, we ain't broke, but we ain't going, you know, we just, we can't keep on this kind of rate. What we do, we take up like a five-dollar fee from each one of us that shows up. We give like a five dollars to help pay the fire bill or whatever. If it's five people, that's twenty-five dollars. If you don't have, if we don't get together but three times a month, that's seventy-five bucks, well, we got to come up with another hundred dollars. And it's not happening, you know, because we don't have enough members, and we just think, we ain't got to, we ain't got to go get it, you know? We can't get out on the street and do what we did. When I adopted Bullets in sixty-nine, seventy, I'm not overdo that no more.
Mr. Mayor, please.
If we can get some help, we'd sure appreciate it.
Sure. Go ahead, Stephen.
Commander, thank you for your service, first of all. And I, and I hate to see this, I'm a member of American Legion, not as opposed to, have been for forty-six years, and thank you for your service. Do you realize that by, by disconnecting from town utilities, from the water and sewer, then the building automatically becomes what's considered an abandoned structure?
No.
Okay. That would happen, and it would fall under Chapter ninety, I believe, of our ordinance, which is abandoned structures. And, and I don't know that you would want to put that building into that process, and I don't know that that process would happen very quickly. It could take some time before you ever got a letter notifying you that. But you did mention putting it up for sale. Are you planning on doing that anytime soon?
Well, if we can get some help, you know, if we can halfway pay our bill, that'd make a lot of difference. I mean, I try, I'm standing here being honest to you as I can.
Understand.
We're not starving to death, but when it comes to one man having a hundred, a hundred dollars out, and this other guy hand out five, it's a big difference, you know? Everybody gets their fair share, and we still don't have enough to pay the bill if ain't but two or three meetings a month.
Right.
If we had four meetings a month, and they send people there, I mean, you know, that's what, thirty-five bucks each meeting? You know, we can make a fire bill long. But where it goes now, we're not having that many meetings. One of us has got to go to the hospital, one of us got to do this, one of us got to do that. I mean, you know, everybody can't be there all the same time each Friday.
Are you planning on shutting the post down or moving the post somewhere else?
That's what's up for debate. We're going, you know, we're trying to decide, well, you know, we're staying Lake Lour, but we got, you know, we got to have a little scare there. What we thought about doing is just, if we sell out, we'll put our money together, try us, buy us another place, or something that's consent, you know, or that way or whatever.
Now, now, I know historically...
You know, someone will be set up a hundred dollars a month for fire and water and everything, you know?
I know historically, the land was owned by an individual, and the building was donated to the American Legion. At some point in time, Mr. Lee Powers, who owned the land, passed away, and I don't know, did that land, did all that ever become one combined deed?
I have no idea.
And does the post now own it?
Anybody know?
I mean, I'm sure all that would have to come out in the legal research on the deed if you decided to sell it.
Probably the only one.
And the other concern was, does the post, since it was donated to the American Legion, not to the post?
That's what I...
Would you, as a post, even have the authority to sell it, or would it have to go to National?
That comes down to, it's donated to Legion, but we have the authority to sell with my sign. If I sign a piece of paper and it gets seconded, we can sell the building.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know all the details. Don't hold me to this. But I don't know all the details about it, but that can happen. Anyway, I ain't want to sell no building. I mean, you know, that's just, you know, we, we're just a situation where we need a little help, and if we can get it, we'll be here.
Okay.
What facilities do you need, as far as you just need a meeting room, or, I'm just wondering if we could set up this room or somewhere else for you, library or something like that, in lieu of that building?
See, we still going to have to pay the, we're still going to have to pay fire bill, sewage bill and everything.
What if the town could work out a plan with, with your approval that would be a perhaps shared use? I have explored several possibilities. I have talked with our planning director and briefly with our town manager, and I believe that there are several options where the town would benefit from a partnership because the town now owns the adjoining property.
Yeah, the bridge.
There are some needs, short-term plans, long-term plans, that my recommendation, if you are agreeable to meet with our town manager and his designees, perhaps someone from our planning board, to discuss some of the issues that would benefit you and relieve you of the financial responsibilities.
That would help. I mean, that's what it's all about, money, you know? If you just take in twenty dollars, you got a two-hundred-dollar bill, a hundred and eighty dollars short. You know, we can't, we just can't keep it up every month. So many of us carry the load, so many don't carry the load, you know? We just ain't, we ain't that, we ain't that powerful. We ain't got that many people. I think altogether, we got like twenty-five, maybe? And then you're talking about guys that's, some of them, what, ninety years old, they don't come do things.
Right. All the, the benefits to you and the benefits to the town could be hashed out, researched.
You know, we're all, we're all for whatever. We ain't, we ain't coming in here begging or whatever, we just, we need some help.
No, that, that land apparently was gifted to the American Legion in honor of veterans No, that land apparently was gifted to the American Legion in honor of veterans. And one of the things we had discussed was, in this process of whatever you work out, acknowledging or erecting a plaque or something acknowledging and honoring the veterans for, in the future. But the particulars of how that might work, I think, need to be discussed with the manager and town representatives, with you or any of your members.
Do you know Bill Burtz?
I do.
Okay, Bill Burtz is the heart of this thing.
Okay.
I mean, Bill Burtz was, I guess he's probably one of the, laid the first brick. I don't know, but he's been in this thing that long. He's a respectable guy, everybody thinks we're all a bill. I mean, you know, if we could talk, get him into conversation, he can tell you who gave, who won, the nine yards. And he's a straight-up guy, so, you know, that comes straight out like.
I've known him since he was postmaster at Lake Lure.
I think he just got, res the building or something, or he's going to move to Greensboro.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he's fixing to cut out on us.
After the meeting, could you give your information to Ron and see y'all can get together and keep it moving?
Sure thing. People, I appreciate it. We all appreciate it.
We appreciate your service.
Excuse me, you're still looking for some kind of resolution temporarily, I think. And in just talking with Ron, and a thought, based on what you said, Commissioner Sylvie, is if we did something like a carryover of the bill for 60 days, and during that 60 days, get in talks with the town manager, like she was just talking about, see if we can't reach some kind of resolution. And if we can't, and you end up still at the end of that 60 days holding on to the building, then we could possibly look at forgiveness of that 60 days of billing for that period. And instead of flat disconnecting, instead of disconnecting at this point in time and it becoming an abandoned structure, which would be more hurtful to you.
That's the last thing we want to do is disconnect. It's $2,300.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a thought for the rest of you.
I think there are several win-win issues here.
But it would need some time to talk those options out.
Exactly.
And instead of, but right now, he's looking for some kind of bill relief, and I see that, but.
Talking to Chris, with the motion, I'll make the motion that we do that. That we go ahead and delay the billing.
Motion for 60 days.
60 days of forgiveness or standby.
And then to work out options, and at the end of that 60 days, if they still hang on to it, then we look, consider bill forgiveness for that 60 days.
That's great, I'll make that motion.
Excellent.
Okay, Bob, motion made by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mary Ann. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number C is utility board member appointment. You have a ballot in front of you or something?
Mr. Mayor, before we get into this, we have four candidates, and I have concern and a question for our attorney. One of the candidates is Mr. Kason, who's in the audience, a very good candidate, but he's currently a councilman or a commissioner in Chimney Rock. He's currently the director of the TDA, and I understand he's also on the zoning and planning commission for Chimney Rock, is that correct, sir? So is he eligible to be appointed to another board under the state law or under the requirements? Since he's currently on a board in Chimney Rock and also a commissioner in Chimney Rock?
You're pointing one in and point two?
If Mr. Kason was appointed, would he be eligible to be appointed? I mean, could we even consider him tonight, based on the fact that he's already on an appointed board and he's also in an elected position?
But not for Lake Lure, that?
Not for Lake Lure, but I thought, you know, I thought those might be state requirements, I didn't know if they bridged municipalities or what, so. I mean, if we appoint him, I just want to be sure we can.
And you make a good point, Stephen. In looking at the Green Line project, you know, we're trying to focus on, this is not a Lake Lure project or a Spandale project, it's a county project. And he's got, you know, the TDA responsibility now. We're going to be looking at and going after grant money to look at design of a trail coming across that, now that we have the money to do it. That's another one of his, the key hot buttons within the county right now. So he offers some unique things to that board. Not only that, but the North Carolina Connect money can only go to towns that meet certain requirements, and we have teed up right now, Spandale will go after it, the county to go after it, and frankly, Chimney Rock could go after it too. And him being a member of their council now. But you make a good point, there might be some restrictions that would not allow it. And it would be good to know if that were the case.
Strategically, and I don't mind saying this openly, I was going to vote for Mr. Kason, and I want to, because I believe strategically, he's our best choice, in my opinion. But yeah, I want to make sure we're legally correct in being able to do so, so.
Looking at the Constitution and ordinance statutes right now, no person shall hold concurrently any two offices in this state that are filled by elective people. So that doesn't apply, does it? This isn't appointed. And no person shall hold concurrently any two or more appointed offices, or any combination of elective and appointed offices, except as a general symbol may apply. Now, says in GS 128-1.1, dual office holding allowed, and tells why.
While he's looking at that, I must say that Don also raised this question of his board, the TDA board, and they gave him authorization to do this. Is that not true, Don?
Yes.
Okay.
The executive board.
Executive board, okay.
Now, the TDA is a hired position, your director, that's a hired position, that's not a board or an elective. But zoning and planning for Chimney Rock and elected for Chimney Rock.
And then this representative, yeah, he probably, he needs to, it's probably a problem. I wouldn't count a hired one, but if he's serving already in one elective and one appointed office, I think it's probably a problem.
Chris, are you sure about that?
Well, see, it doesn't say same town. Well, let's, this peruse statute says.
Chris, why don't we, we can table this next week.
We can, because it says for local government, it doesn't say local governments. There's an implication that the dual holding is within the same town, not both towns. Otherwise, it would say government, government's rural.
Obviously, this is something to give, to be real comfortable with your recommendation, it's going to take a little bit of time to research, is that fair to say?
Yeah.
Why don't we make the, put it off till next month?
That's fine. Yep.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, let's postpone that one to next month.
And we're also open to more applications.
Okay, item number D, 10D. Consider request from Don Kason, representing Rutherford County, TDA, concerning appointment of a town representative to participate in the county tourism strategic planning process. Don, you want to come forward and tell what this process is all about? You want to talk a little bit about TDA too?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, good to see you this evening, and thank you for considering me for the utility board. Whatever this board decides, I'm fine with. Trust me, I'm not trying to see how involved I can be everywhere, but just want to help when and where I can, so. But thank you for that. As far as TDA, as you mentioned, I'm the new executive director for the TDA, and I'm excited about that, having the time of my life. That's a little plug buzzword for the area, right? Okay. So anyway, having the time of my life and just really enjoying working with TDA from the county, Rutherford County and tourism. So what I want to talk to you about tonight is, I'm going to give you two items, a quick update, and then we're going to talk about our tourism advisory committee. But the updates from the TDA, as far as that goes, I want to make sure that the council here knows that in this year's budget, the TDA Board of Directors has approved a new state-of-the-art website. We have funded, we are going to be funding a state-of-the-art website from a company, we have gone out and done an RFP and everything, and a company called Simple View. They're going to be doing our website. They have done over 300 tourist destination market websites across the country. Over 22 of them in the state of North Carolina have done the Asheville website, Greensboro, Raleigh, and so forth, and they've just done some wonderful job there, so we're going to be able to gain that experience. But what I'm excited about is, Rutherford County has taken the ball and said, hey, let's, because our website that we have now just needs a lot of help and work, but what I'm impressed with is our board has stepped up to the table and really gone and go do a state-of-the-website, state-of-the-art site, and it's going to be eight or nine months. But we hope by April or May that we can have that up and going, so that's something to come. The other thing that the board has approved in this year's budget is, we have, it's been a long process, but putting together a wayfinding program. I'm sure a lot of you in this room and throughout the county was involved with the master plan for the wayfinding. And different things came up and about, but it's finally going to be funded. It's a project that the board is saying that we're going to gift it to all the towns in the county. It's going to be over 148 signs across the county, tourism directional information signs throughout the county, and we're excited about that. And we're working with Shannon and his team here with, from the Lake Lure perspective, and getting the input and direction on that. So I'll be coming back to you with the contract, I'll probably work with Ron and get a contract to you, because the TDA board is wanting a contract, just a memorandum of understanding type thing, what's involved with that. We're going to gift it upfront, but there's going to be some maintenance and things down the road that need to be budgeted for over the next 10 years as far as the placement of those signs, but that'll be all spelled out in the contract, okay? All right, so those are the two things. But the most exciting thing that I'm excited about mainly is, the board has also approved, with the vision of the TDA board is, we are going to do a countywide tourism strategic plan. And basically, Rutherford County, we're going to be bringing citizens, businesses, tourism leaders throughout the county, and bringing them together and focused on doing a countywide plan. Basically, if this is where tourism is today in Rutherford County, where do we want it to be in five, 10, and 15 years? We want it to be here, right? Well, there's going to be a process to raise the bar, and that process, the board has approved, and we're going to fund a tourism strategic plan, bring in a team of consultants to come in and help us put together a countywide plan. Part of that plan will be gathering information. I know Lake Lure specifically has brought in different visions and different things, but I'm saying that will be part of the process, is bringing in all the things that have been done in the past, but focused on what needs to be done for tourism. Mayor Keith, you know that the county right now is going through a countywide economic development strategic plan. Well, we all in tourism consider tourism a part of economic development, okay? So as the county goes forward with their plan, we as tourism, the tourism industry, we're not, we're not going to go without the county, we're not trying to get ahead or whatever, we're basically going to come up with a tourism plan, working cooperatively with the county, okay? When it makes sense. But tourism will be focused on what makes tourism tick, so. We as tourism, the tourism industry, we're not, we're not going to go without the county, we're not trying to get ahead or whatever, we're basically going to come up with a tourism plan, working cooperatively with the county, okay? When it makes sense. But tourism will be focused on what makes tourism tick, so. We as tourism, the tourism industry, we're not, we're not going to go without the county, we're not trying to get ahead or whatever, we're basically going to come up with a tourism plan, working cooperatively with the county. When it makes sense. But tourism will be focused on what makes tourism tick, so. We as tourism, the tourism industry, we're not, we're not going to go without the county, we're not trying to get ahead or whatever, we're basically going to come up with a tourism plan, working cooperatively with the county. When it makes sense. But tourism will be focused on what makes tourism tick, so. We as tourism, the tourism industry, we're not, we're not going to go without the county, we're not trying to get ahead or whatever. As you look down that list, you'll see, where you see a names beside a position, those names have committed to serving on the advisory committee, okay? Where you see a blank, for instance, just example, town of Bostick, we haven't been able to get with them and get representation at this point. However, we plan to, Ellenboro, Bostick, and so forth. And then I'm in the process of.
Okay, I don't support a second by at this time.
This is a advisory committee to the TDA.
I'll make a motion, we extend it for a year, as is.
In a second, but I'll support it. Motion made by.
Do the strategic plan and give insight and input, but all citizens throughout Rutherford County, when it's time to give input and direction for tourism, will be involved and have that opportunity. But this advisory committee will kind of direct the process. And we're looking for somebody from Lake Lure to represent that. And again, I'm excited about the process and the program, because at the end of the day, Rutherford County is going to have a tourism strategic plan with implementation process, and yes, there is going to be funding needs to get there, but you always need resources and funding in the future, and we'll be doing that. But what I'm excited is, east, west, north, south, Rutherford County will know where we need to go for tourism, and it'll be based on input that we gained and put together. So I think that's the end of my spiel. I am open for questions and would like to entertain any questions at this time.
We just appreciate your energy in getting this off and running and getting us on the right track, because it's been a long time coming. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I noticed a lot of town managers, very unique, very unique, and well, and the reason I say this is that we're one of the few towns that has a community development director, or somebody that works on economic development. And I know, you've talked about, a little bit about this, haven't you, Ron? Well, any thoughts by the board? I mean, how many council?
Should it be our community development director, should it be Shannon?
I think we need to talk with them and see if it'll fit in his schedule. You know, we've got, he has a lot on his plate right now, but I think maybe we could put out some feelers and maybe come up with something.
And any of you, and also, anytime the tourism advisory committees get together, anyone's welcome to attend. We're just trying to make sure we have one person to target, to contact, and also, when it comes down to a vote on selecting a company, that there's just one vote and not 10.
Anticipation, do you have any concept of what kind of time this would take for the person that is appointed, and how many days, a week, or a month? Any concept of that?
Well, I think, as you see there, we're looking at 25 people on advisory committee, and when you start involving the whole county and all that, and in all the towns, you know, that committee's going to get pretty large. I foresee, yes, a monthly meeting during the planning process, but, I mean, the plan will be orchestrated by the TDA staff and also the facilitator company that's coming in. So advisory is, I think, I'm at a point of saying advisory. Once a month, you get together, you get an update, give us the direction. I don't anticipate a whole lot of time, but as you mentioned, Shannon, with his expertise and other people on the advisory committee want to get more involved, trust me, we will welcome more involvement. But as far as, is anybody going to slap your hand if you don't, if you don't do anything else besides attend the advisory meetings? No, I don't see that happening. The TDA staff will, myself, will be heavily involved in implementation and the process, but we're just looking for buy-in and commitment, and want to make sure Lake Lure knew that they were a part of it, so.
Do you, not trying to tie you down to exact specifics, but a once-a-month advisory meeting and get-together, do you see something like that as an all-day or a half-day affair?
Well, the first advisory, yeah, the first advisory meeting will probably be a three-hour program, basically, an hour, because there'll be people coming together in a meeting that, you've got to remember, there's going to be 30 people who don't necessarily know each other. So the first advisory committee meeting, the thoughts are, the program will be an hour of everybody getting to know each other, and then probably work through some things over lunch. And then the plan is also to have the state come in, from the Department of Commerce or somebody come in and give us, when I say us, the county, some details, what plan involves, and kind of lay some of the groundwork of the benefits. I mean, the state of North Carolina. I mean, the state of North Carolina is doing an economic plan and tourism a part of that. So, kind of pulling that together, so yes, the first advisory meeting and stuff will be a three- or four-hour meeting. After that, though, I would just see continue updates, but also taking volunteers to do more. At any point in time, we sure won't turn down the help, but there won't be any kind of mandatory program.
Yeah, knowing that kind of information would help me in a recommendation.
Right, I understand.
And that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I would just say, in my discussion with the mayor and Mr. Kason, I had expressed that this being new, it probably wasn't appropriate at this time for, for me to, to do that, just because I don't have the knowledge of the community. But certainly Shannon, who's been working with you all pretty close, would, would seem a natural fit for that.
Shannon's been a big help to me personally and the TDA and stuff on some things, just in some general feedback and stuff, so Shannon's well, well aware with the mayor, we've been in some meetings one-on-one, but also with EDC and that kind of stuff. So, Mayor Keith, I know you understand the dynamics of this, and, like I said, I don't want anybody to think tourism's trying to run out and leave the rest of economic development alone with the county, because it will be a cooperative effort at the right time and the right place. Steve Garrison, the city man, or county manager, is well aware of the process, and so, and at some point, it may all mingle together, but we want to make sure tourism's covered.
One of, one of the things is that, and anybody from the county here?
I would, I would like to comment.
Are there some, let me, let me comment first, and then I'll let you have your say. For the last seven years, while I've been in this position, I'd say at the beginning of this, the county couldn't spell tourism. They were strictly a mentality of a manufacturing mentality, and without going through all the detailed steps, right now, the board has Richard Lundey from the resort, has Barbara Molesky, former mayor at Chimney Rock, has Diane Barrett, part of the TDA board. I mean, this is a big step forward, and this is one that we really would like to participate in, because there's another penny out there that we could be, for occupancy tax, and maybe we could be utilizing. There's a lot of things that we'd be doing, and, and really, tourism can be leveraged for, for the benefit of the entire county, and that's a tough thing for those people over on the other side of the county to understand. And, you know, Don coming in and with all the other folks, we are making great strides. So, this is a very careful decision, and I agree with John that if, you know, if, if Shannon doesn't have the time, then probably we ought to maybe be looking for some other way of attacking this problem. But it's a, it's a big, I think this is a big, big decision in our, in our history.
Yeah, well, and just real quick, tourism is coming together, east, west sides, I feel a sense of camaraderie coming together and understand tourism. Tourism today saves the average homeowner in Rutherford County three hundred and eighty dollars in taxes because of the tourism impact. And I think the rest of the, everybody's starting to understand that and understands that with the Equestrian Center and the different things coming. We just need to plan, and I'm looking at this process to be the future of what is, what the future direction is for tourism for all of Rutherford County, especially the gorge area.
We appreciate it, Don.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Come up there and say.
Sure, Pat and, and Yvonne, if you want to also.
I will say this to everybody out here, I have a check here for a hundred dollars. I'm gonna give it to Bob or whoever is on the utility board to pay our, for our veterans' water bill. So, this is a good start, this is paying it forward, so.
Ron.
Well, at least it's not written "Made out to Ron Nally."
Veterans.
American Legion.
We'll do that. Go ahead, Stephen.
Thank you. I will, thank you.
I don't want that to go in y'all's pocket. It's going to the veterans.
Okay, Yvonne?
We, we need to pass a plate here.
Thank you. That's four.
Thank you, Fran.
I'm sorry.
Can I just speak from here?
Well, you gotta speak up, though, that's the one thing, it's, we have to take in the minutes and all that type of thing. Plus, you're on TV when you're up here.
I think your tourism idea is wonderful, but we moved here fifteen years ago because we love this little town of Lake Lure. I know you can't stop progress, and I don't want to stop it, but there's a lot of us that don't want it to become a Dollywood either, and I know it will never happen to that extent, but just calm things down a little and let it be a sweet, wonderful town that we moved into fifteen years ago. That's my only comment. And it's not just my feelings, it's a lot of other feeling, people, too, that take it slow and not spoil our little beautiful town.
Very good, Yvonne. Well, that'll all come out in a lot of the planning processes that we're doing, so, appreciate.
While we're doing it.
While, while we're doing it, exactly. So, very good, thank you. Okay. All right, item number E.
Do I, do I make a motion? I make a motion that we go into closed session in accordance with General Statute 143 dash three-one-eight point eleven, sub A, sub six, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters concerning discussion of attorney candidates.
That's right, I have, before we go, I've been doing research, where Don goes.
He's still there.
Is the county tourism strategic planning process, is that an official board of the county?
The county strategic.
Well, I understand they were wanting to make, point you a town representative to participate in the county tourism strategic planning process.
No.
No.
It was, no, it's to the, that's the board, it's, we're talking about two different boards. She was talking about a board, and we were talking about a, a, the utility commission.
Oh, to point to, you're a utility.
Right. Yeah, the town utility commission.
Is your utility commission a board?
Yes. We've made it a board, yes.
She missed that.
Yeah, maybe she'll have done that. It's the utility advisory board for the town, and Don is one of the candidates for that, and has, we're looking at that.
Okay, item number ten E, motion made by Stephen, did I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Because I, I want to make a point before, any other discussion? Ron, Ron came into my office, and we discussed this before, is that one of the things that we're going into discuss candidates, not the process. Do we want to talk about the process before, the process of selection before we go in and talk about candidates specifically? So, it's, that, part of it should be in an open, done in an open meeting.
Right.
It's, I throw that out, it's a discussion that Ron brought to my attention, and my idea was that we would talk about that in the closed session as well, but he raised a good question.
Well, basically, we're just looking for recommendations, and then we'll have to vet those out and take some of Chris's knowledge.
Talking about specific candidates and, and whether or not we want to make an offer to somebody.
Okay.
I think you knew that in closed session, but the process, not naming, not talking about any particular ones probably has to be done up.
Right.
Okay. Okay, motion made and seconded, do I hear all the favorites say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into closed session.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming from on tree.
What you got, Fran? Let me close her out there, we all got a couple of passes.